All right, are we ready with?
No, we're not.
Okay. Looks for like in the minutes it says that I started.
Just put it, make sure the minutes say that.
Recording in progress.
And YouTube recording. All right, I'll go ahead and follow the meeting order. Who else can maybe hear? Uh, this is City Council, Monday, June 9, 2025. Roll call please.
Jared Miller.
Here.
Eric Surin.
Here.
Chris Ryan. Jim Mazias.
Here.
Doug Amet.
Here.
Did I get that right?
You did.
Amen.
Amen.
Dave Anderson. Dave Anderson. Don Benson.
Here.
Jared Trumbo.
Here.
Coram the peck.
Okay, our next is item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next item is approval of minutes from the main council meeting.
I'd like the motion to approve that.
Second question by Jared, second by Doug. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. The next item is approval of monthly expenditures.
I'm in for motion of the approved monthly expenditures.
Second.
Motion by Jared, second by Doug. Roll call votes.
Jared Trumbo.
Yes.
Don Benson.
Yes.
Doug Amet.
Yes.
Jim Mazias.
Yes.
Eric Surin.
Yes.
Jared Miller.
Yes.
I'm going to ask uh everyone to make sure that your microphone is pulled up close. If you guys are sharing, just put it right between you and me there. Thank you. And our next item is public comment. Is anyone here who would like to hear a public comment? Please go ahead and sign in and um. Make sure the microphone is on there. Thank you.
I'm Susan Everett at 500 Woodland Drive, but I want to talk to you tonight, not as myself, but as curator of the Washburn Area Museum. Uh, and I'd like to encourage you to come individually, not a, you know, a, take an official meeting, but if you haven't been there, um, since you're sitting in those chairs, I assume you're interested in Washburn and that you might be interested in the history of Washburn. And uh, I think you will find it would be interesting to go. If you haven't been there in a long time, there are some changes. Uh, I know this whole number of people in this town, the last time they were there was in fourth grade, so it must have been a while. Uh, I'm only there on Fridays and Saturdays from noon to four, but if that doesn't work for you, um, please let me know. You can contact me through at washburnmuseum, one word, at gmail dot com. Washburn Museum at gmail dot com. Sundays would be great, I'd be happy to open up and show you around. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate the offer. If you want a sneak preview, look at the Discover Wisconsin episode where I had the film crew go up to the museum and we highlighted the model city. It's pretty cool. Jewel Pickard, Seventeenth Street, Washburn. This had one thing I wanted to, I felt I needed to say something about. I know there's going to be a proclamation called Community for All, and in my opinion, there's no reason for this proclamation, which seems to be calling attention to a nonexistent problem in a community. Not only that, but at the federal level, there are executive orders against the adoption of DEI, which is included in the proclamation. DEI is a construct made up and defined by one political party. It creates a special class of individuals, which is against the Constitution. And although proclamations don't appear to be listed specifically in the executive order, DEI is, and I don't know why Washburn would want to chance having their funding pulled since we need the money. The title Community for All does not negate the DEI designation within it, and I just think the city should remain a political. Thanks. Thank you for sharing your opinion. Anyone else? Karen.
Good evening, Mayor Motif and members of the common council. My name is Karen Novicek, I reside at Sixten East Fourth Street, Washburn. I, um, and some of you may know chair the ad hoc, Bayfield Street Ad hoc Beautification Committee, and it has been, uh, some time since that given you an update in terms of where we are with beautification of Bayfield Street. Hopefully, you have noticed and, um, and enjoyed our planters that have been placed near the pole, light poles to limit the obstruction or to prevent any obstruction of the sidewalk. Uh, we are in the process, uh, Jerry tells me, of putting together the benches uh, that have not been, obviously not been placed yet and pending your discussion later in the agenda, that will impact that. Uh, we have ten benches and I'm glad to report that nine of those benches have been purchased by businesses or families in memorial of a, a, a family member or, uh, just donated by. And, uh, what I wanted to underline this evening is that we are planning a dedication of those benches on July, on Saturday, July 26th at 10:00 in the morning. Location to be determined, but we determined that that would be a great time uh, for those families and businesses to be recognized. And also, uh, my subtle second reason for having it then is that perhaps some of the persons that have come back from home for homecoming might be interested in purchasing a bench for the second phase. Uh, the benches are sold at $900 apiece, uh, and I am excited that we have been able to sell all nine of them and I have a party that's interested perhaps in the tent. So that would be good because obviously we needed to replenish uh, the fund that we have available to do beautification on the second phase of Bayfield Street. Uh, so it is important for the city, uh, if we can get all of those benches, um, sold. And again, the, um, plaques on the benches, uh, are, have been made by the machine, um, students at Northwood Tech and they were excited to do it and I was excited to, uh, to work with them. Just one comment about our trash receptacles. They are now completed and, uh, late last week, they were transported to the company that will be doing the power coating. Uh, we have selected, uh, art images that will be slipped into frames on two sides of those trash receptacles. So while I indicated that the dedication on the 26th would be primarily the benches, we are also acknowledging, uh, the planters and certainly the trash receptacles and all the people that helped make that possible. So mark your calendars, I know you have lots of things on, uh, homecoming weekend, but 10:00 AM, we promise it will be short. Garrett's got a speech maybe, and so I can't guarantee it will be short, but yeah, 10 o'clock and I'll give you more information about the location.
I'll just have to make sure they don't schedule me for the 10:00 at 10:00.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Karen, for all your work on that as well as all the committee members. It's exciting. Is there any other public comment? Any other public comments? Seeing none, it's even more than usual. There are announcements, proclamations, and appointments. Um, yes, I forgot, uh, did you get copies of that? Then I had to ask somebody to make copies of. Or did I just send that to you and then you weren't here? Uh, I didn't.
Check it.
Give me one second as I move into the mayoral. I am going to look at my sent email and Tony, if I told it just to you, should you put it up on the screen for now and we will have your copies for everyone? Um, I must have just sent it to Randy. This was Sunday, April 26th. But I'll give this, so tell me to pull it up on the screen. I should, you should get that now. So, um, so what I just sent to Tony, um, is a short report from, um, Heather Atherton, one of our full-time EMTs. They made Heather the outreach coordinator, um, for the ambulance service. And, um, her, one of her first items of outreach was reaching out to me to get together to have a meeting. And we had a really great meeting, talking about ideas for how we can, um, communicate with the community better about, uh, what's happening in the ambulance service, just kind of staying in touch on things, keeping it top of mind. Uh, and one of the ideas that, that I had was to do just a brief update at council meetings, um, at least periodically. Uh, we used to have a council member who was also a EMT and, and probably often bring statistics that were extremely helpful and interesting, uh, to meetings. And so Heather sends this along and I am going to... I can't see the screen, so I'm going to pull it up on my own.
Yeah, I don't have the full, I mean, that's multiple pages, I only have half the page now.
Oh, sure, and we can scroll down a little bit. Um, so I'm going to just touch on some of this. So this past month, so this was for May of 2025, uh, our ambulance went on 28 calls. There were no missed calls. And so far in 2025, there have been 192 calls. And then if you look at the graph, um, you can kind of tell, even though 2025 is, um, uh, not complete, obviously, you can tell that the first segment at the bottom, I don't know if you can enlarge the screen a little bit. Uh, the first segment is January, right? The dark one at the bottom, and so it looks like we had a lot of calls in January. So we are, uh, ahead of a lot of years with, with the number of calls so far to date anyway. Um, so just a little insight into that. Um, a couple of other, uh, statistics. We have 12 EMTs that are active, three of those are full-time. We also have three EMRs, which, um, you can have an EMR with an EMT on a call. Uh, they don't have quite as much education and, uh, experience, but, um, one of our EMRs in particular has a lot of experience. He's been, Nick has been going on a lot of calls, that's one of our officers. Um, and, uh, then it was just a note, um, I think this was, uh, approved at some point, but just to remind you that one of our full-time EMTs will be gone on Sbatical from June 23rd to August 12th. Um, and so, of course, one of the things that she wants to do is, um, recruit people to come and be a PMT. Um, and so through some outreach and education, um, hopefully, we're going to be, um, we're going to be putting, um, some information out about an informational session that they're going to do for folks, because there's a class coming up at the, I think at the end of August, maybe, an EMT class through Northwoods Tech. And so we're trying to time it so that the information gets out, people get interested, they can come for this informational session and then, um, potentially, you know, have a couple of people sign up for the class, which would be great. On May 21st, it was EMS for Children's Day, which I'm not sure who does that, but, um, you know, whose designation that is. Uh, but three members of the Washburn Ambulance Service visited the elementary school and gave tours of the ambulance throughout the morning. She said it wasn't as many classes as usual because it was kind of short notice and not everybody could get there, but the classes that did come through, um, she said it was exhausting and great. It was wonderful, um, you know, just having that much interaction with these young, curious minds coming through the ambulance. That's, that's a great way to touch, have a touch point early in the lives of our, of our local residents, right? And get the interest up. And then, um, we talked about, um, a way to do something with, um, high school age kids, you know, as they're getting closer to actually being able to potentially become an EMT. Um, we talked about maybe getting, um, I know Northwoods Tech has those virtual reality goggles, um, and that would be something that would be popular, I'm sure, to do, um, a session like that at the high school where people can take a turn using the virtual reality goggles. I tried it when I was at a, uh, a conference up at Legendary Waters where Northwoods Tech was there, and you can pick what scenario you want. And so I picked like, um, a scientist, uh, in a lab. Uh, and it was, once you get the hang of it, you have to go through like a little training on how to use virtual reality, you might have to practice hitting something with a hammer and busting your heart. Uh, and then you go into your, um, scenario and it's, it's pretty cool. Like you have a name badge and you have to, you know, scan it on a thing and a door opens and all of a sudden you're in the other room and it's pretty cool. So, um, that would be just an idea for a way to, to reach out to, uh, high school age and adults. Um, so then just some statistics, uh, below that, monthly requests for service versus the three-year average. And there you can really see that, um, 2025 is up in January compared. Uh, it comes back now a little bit. Um, so that'll just be interesting to keep an eye on. And then that last one on the next page, it's, uh, when the accident fire department, um, had to respond due to a lack of staffing on the ambulance service. So it's interesting because, and I should have asked her this question after I looked at this the second time. Um, so there are times when they've had to step in more than others. They didn't at all in 2022, but then in 2025, it looks like they did. Um, but it, yeah, it said that there were zero calls missed, so I'm not sure.
This is from the first week.
Oh, that was for the month, right? Okay, so that probably was in January, I don't know how those calls were actually. Um, so that's it, that's just a short little report from EMS. I don't know how, uh, if or how you want to see these periodically or from other committees and commissions too. I thought it might be interesting, um, just to know what's going on with the different committees and commissions that people are serving on. Um, so that's something that I'll just kind of bring back periodically or touch base with you off, offline and make a plan for doing a little highlight like this. Uh, so moving on, um, next is, uh, I already mentioned that another innovation planning grant that we were awarded. Um, so this is another $95,000 that it comes to the city and then we have an agreement, this time the agreement is with, um, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, and they're going to be the, the agency who contracts with, um, with, uh, another agency to do the actual work. And let me just read to you briefly our, uh, description from the application. Working with a group of municipal stakeholders, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities would study municipal services that may be provided by a single entity on behalf of client municipalities. The single entity municipal services agency, or Musa, which is kind of like a CISA for the school districts, would function similar to how comprehensive educational service agencies, CISA's, operate on behalf of school districts with its support coming from client municipalities that want a more efficient way to provide services to their citizens. Services to be provided by Musa may include, but not limited to, grant writing administration, liquor license processing, human resources, purchasing, bill processing, budgeting, risk management, and general administration. Actual services would be determined and prioritized through the proposed feasibility study. Um, so we came up with a scope of work and a, and a proposal by the company that we're working with to do this planning part of it. Um, and it's just a really, um, kind of a neat opportunity to get in, uh, to make this, you know, to have the study be paid for, um, so that we can see if there's any potential statewide for this to be an actual thing. And then in July already is when the next, um, funding comes available to actually do a project. So that's going to be a whole other decision at that point. If the study shows that there really is interest and, um, they want to move forward. I don't know that we necessarily have to be the applicants again for that, but either way, whoever does, it would be another situation where it's not putting more work on our staff necessarily, it's literally just being a fiscal agent, pretty much for a plan. Um, but I was happy that we were able to get this in on time and take advantage of this pot of money that was set aside, um, to do this type of work, to try to make it more efficient for municipalities to do the work that we need to do, there's always too much of.
But the other, like Ashland, Bayfield, like everybody, like, is it the northern tier of Wisconsin?
No, whole state. Whole state.
Oh, you said state, I was like, that's pretty big.
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big undertaking. Um, but the, the organization that is signed up to do it is, um, really well-staffed and, and positioned to do this, uh, planning work, so I'm excited.
Centralizing.
Um.
You're familiar.
Skip. No, I mean, I think some things can be simple. To me, it makes more sense to maybe do it like in a northern tier, like smaller communities versus statewide, so that's why I asked the right question.
Well, the, the planning is statewide, but the result could be.
Could be.
That it is a, exactly, that it would be, um, a, a divided up.
Yeah.
Agency that would be able to help different areas. You know, the, the look of how that looks, it won't be decided in the planning part. The planning is just what are the needs, what are the things that make sense, um, that could be contracted out?
I mean, it's a lot of, it's a lot of money.
Yeah. What, the $95,000?
No, that's just from this, I mean, the whole thing is, there was 21 requests to gather together. So it was like $1 million to do all this. Am I off on that?
Um, so those are all different requests. Are you looking at what was in the packet?
Mm-hmm. Am I in the topic, am I like not looking right? I'm on page one. One page one.
That wasn't all said to us.
That's every, that's everybody who applied. So this is that pot of money that was set aside, um, through, um, the shared revenue funds. Um, and it was for innovation planning. And so, um, I think this was, this went out to everybody. So they approved 68 different requests from municipalities and tribes statewide. So we were, we did two of those out of the 68.
Okay.
Um, and it had to be a municipality of 5,000 or less as an applicant. Um, and it, and you can partner with a bigger entity, which is what we did with the county on the first one, uh, for the EMS study that's happening, um, or that's going to happen. Um, so that's the total, so $3 million. Uh, whole, part of that whole shared revenue deal was, um, the, uh, party in charge wanted there to be some incentive for efficiencies and for innovative planning for efficiencies, um, as part of giving out this extra shared revenue money that's now tied to the sales tax. So they put aside this pot of money, instead of just giving out all that money as shared, as extra shared revenue money, they put aside this pot specifically for this type of planning. And so that's what this is, we're tapping into that pot of money so that it got utilized instead of going back to, you know, fund or whatever. Um, so does that help answer that question?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, when I see things like, and then the next step is mid-July for $300 million in funding available, and that's to do a project.
Because that's going to be a lot more money to actually do the project than it is to study it and do the project.
It's just a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
It's just a lot, I mean, we can look at that, how much everybody's struggling across the state and you see 300 million, 300 million dollars, you're just like.
No.
No one.
Yeah, it will be 300 million for the projects.
Yeah, for mid-July, that's coming up.
So, so that's how much money they held back and didn't just let us have.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
I know, believe me.
Makes me like.
We fought hard just to get the money, but we had to hold our nose and take what we could get.
Yeah, I just, um, I just wanted to know that.
You want your piece of money.
Yeah, I feel like that's a lot of money, that's like going towards grants and... Maybe, maybe there's going to be some really cool things out of it where we can save money a lot more and hopefully, I'm glad that we're part of it, but it just, it just kind of makes me choke a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, conspiracy, I, I owe you.
Um, it's a big number.
We just think about what our budget is for, you know, like.
What?
Right. I like 10 grand.
Uh, so that's what that is about, um, and then I would like to, um, read my Community for All proclamation, and this is just a proclamation. This is nothing binding, this doesn't require anything of the city as, uh, as an entity. It's just a sentiment, um, that our community is welcoming to everyone, even those who maybe don't have as open of a mind as I'm hoping for in our community. And so, whereas Washburn's social, economic, and collective physical and mental well-being is predicated on our community's ability to be an open, inclusive, and diverse place to live and work, and whereas a community's values are not only determined by its elected bodies, but also its residents, families, business owners, nonprofit leaders, community organizers, religious institutions, and schools. And whereas human diversity can be defined as differences in race, ethnicity, nationality, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, age, physical and or mental capabilities, and religious beliefs. Whereas the city of Washburn recognizes diversity, inclusion, and equity as essential to positive and healthy lives and is committed to ensuring people of all perspectives and experiences are welcome and feel safe in our community. And whereas the city of Washburn is welcoming and inclusive to all residents and visitors alike, no matter their age, race, color, national origin, religion, gender identity or expression, sexual orientation, disability, or socioeconomic familial or veteran status. Now, therefore, I, Mary Demotiv, Mayor of the city of Washburn, in recognition of these points, to hereby proclaim the city of Washburn as a... as a community for all, and will continue to promote an environment that accepts, celebrates, and appreciates diversity within the community while condemning any hate-based activity, treatment, or discrimination due to a person's protected class. And I call on our partners in government, residents, families, business owners, nonprofit leaders, community organizers, religious institutions, and schools to do the same. And finally, I have one appointment tonight, and that is a reappointment of Chris Gaver to the library board. Chris is happy to be reappointed. She enjoys her tremendously and is now retired. Of course, has even more time getting involved with the activities of the library board. So if someone wouldn't mind making a motion to reappoint Chris Gaver.
Make a motion?
Second that.
Motion by Jen, second by Jared, on favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you to Chris. And hopefully I will announce those appointments soon, and then they're outstanding. Okay, moving on to our next item. Is this just a confirmation of the date? We already voted to do this workshop, and we were hoping for a different date at noon? Okay. So the strategic priorities workshop, the seventeenth was not gonna work for a number of folks in June. So we're looking now at July eighth, which is a Tuesday. And they had proposed move to six, and I thought, we have so many people at work. I asked if we could move it to two to eight instead of twelve to six. Because that's close six hours, but bumped down a little bit, so people have to come late. So yeah, but hopefully people can maybe get off a couple hours from work. What does everyone think about that?
Could we talk about that? Yeah, the state came as a surprise, right? Could we just pick the state out of the blue?
He came back with some other dates that they'd be available. And this was the best date for me, so I'm putting it out there. But there are, there's one other option of those dates that he gave us. So there's July eighth, and then do you remember what the other one was? July twenty? Something. Is the eighth not good?
Eight is good for me personally, but twenty have to be tough. Say twenty-first or twenty?
Um.
I'm tempted, I'm a vacationer, really short.
Oh, no, really. The twenty-second is the other one. Tuesday, July twenty-second.
No, I don't wanna be virtual. I wanna be there.
Yeah. Tuesday, July twenty-second could work also.
Yeah, because like we're all gonna be in town for homecoming.
Like the twenty-second?
Like that week. I mean, July twenty-second is like way better for me.
That's a Tuesday, right? Yeah, so that would be fun too. Twenty-second work with people?
Yeah, it might be a little late-ish.
Oh, it's not much.
Roasting day.
Yeah. Either, either Tuesday.
Either, either Tuesday, doesn't matter.
Maybe just roast it. Can we just come here?
So hopefully that twenty, or twenty-second date would still be in the envelope. You can check what's in. All right.
I mean, I can make the eighth happen if that's just it, but I was gone. I was on vacation that week, but I could come back. Everyone else having fun?
No problem. Oh, it's great. I'm supposed to babysit two nephews. That gives me a chance to go out of the house. Ah, boy, my calendar.
So just get in touch with myself or Randy on that.
Can you just let us know as soon as you decide?
For sure.
Ag for the twenty-second.
Okay, so the twenty-second is open, sounds like people. As long as, we'll check with Darren's calendar too. Okay, and, and date, because he could be here tonight. Okay, moving on, we are looking at a resolution on the compliance maintenance annual report, which is in ten of your packets. I don't know if everyone has had a chance to look through this yet or not, but basically it, it says sections, and you're rated in each of the sections. And you, you get points against you basically if you, you know, answer a certain way to some of the questions, so. A lot of these sections were looking good and tip-top shape. Jerry, I don't know if you have anything you want to say about this, but I think the one where we had
An angel.
Four points. Last two. Did you miss the last two?
The last one is gonna be addressed. Working on that. Finances. I might just think of that.
So, yeah, with the finances, I mean, the good news for that is we have a housing project going in that's gonna be down to sewer and water. That's gonna help. And then it looks like, I think the private is moving along over here. I think they moved in a construction trailer over here on the brewery. And so that would be another variable use of the water utility, which every, every little bit helps there. But I think, yeah, we have a lot, a little ways to go on being financially solvent there since we have so many people that aren't on the water utility up on the hill. And that's something that maybe at Plan Commission we can talk about. You know, are there ways of incentivizing those folks when their, when their septic is time to change over to get a couple people on the same block that they used, you know, ready to hop onto the sewer and water.
And, and just clearly, you just had said there that several people up on the hill that aren't on the water utility, specifically this is just sewer.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yes, sewer, water, separate.
Right.
Because there are separate regulations that apply to each.
In, in my question, I'm geared off.
Yes, no, I think it's good to connect both, but this is specifically only the sewer.
Yes. And my question was, at one time, didn't we talk about like getting other types of like sewage or different things that we could bring in and treat to try to supplement?
Yes, so I can tell you.
How do you know so much about the sewer?
There's currently a petition with Pike's Bay Sanitary District to greatly reduce the size of that sanitary district or consider requiring other people in that sanitary district to have septic systems to deposit or to put that in the Pike's Bay sanitary district. I know that there are several septic haulers who pump tanks from properties in the Pike's Bay Sanitary District that dump them here in Washburn because they have cheaper rates. That's a consideration that's happening in the town of Bayfield right now. I do know that the, the town of Bayview had had some discussions about potential, and these are all things that are like ideas that might come up in the future. Potential expansions of City of Washburn sanitary services out to the town of Bayview, like we've done to the town of Darnsdale. Because our city's sanitary system is way bigger than what we currently have attached to it.
Which is like runs in the red.
And that's why our financial grade is an F.
Yes.
So ideas of, of ways to potentially expand that, there are several on the table.
Well, we've been, we've been talking about this for years, right? I mean, this is.
And it might be time to come up with a
Right.
and a plan to actually have some action on it. And I say that because it might be good, granted, we wouldn't overlap with Pike's Bay Sanitary District because that comes right up to, personally, Skeet Road. But there may be some, if they are taking action, which I know that they are right now, some are motivation to get other municipalities or, or septic haulers to agree to certain things to come to us while that's all happening in Pike's Bay.
I thought one of the questions was, do you have other people contributing to your district? And we said no.
Jerry, you got Jerry.
I don't know that, that, I, I don't know the specifics on that, but in my reviewing the minutes and hearing the discussions from, from town of Bayfield, they're, not all of their septic haulers dump into Pike's Bay Sanitary District, which I guess that was my assumption, they just come here. No, okay. That was a wrong assumption.
So number, number five is, did you have a request to receive septic at your facility?
We get requests all the time.
Says no.
Yeah. Well, I mean, they ask, but, I mean, it's generally the same haulers. So you have to understand that in order to receive hauler waste, you have to have a storage facility to contain that, to hold it, because you can't help that kind of volume in your plant without disrupting it, making it, the whole treatment process, so you gotta balance it all. Most plants that take hauler waste in outside sources, which is a good source of funding, but you have to have a containment area where it's brought in, and then it's pumped into your system, uh, to keep hold of quantity. Most places that take it in will bring it in, bring it in to hold it, and then if the flow's dropped out, they'll start slowly feeding it into the plant. But again, you have to be really careful with that because you could disrupt your plant because a lot of times those solids are really high in, in, in VOD demand, and you can upset your plant really, really quick. Now, I do know that our plant, I will say, I'm gonna take a look at this report. The nice part is, you will see that in a twelve-month period, we never broke from it once. The plant, I mean, if you remember, we've had issues with that pipe going sour on us. Usually late winter, early spring, we have issues done with, almost last year. We met every, every factor to every limit to all the treatment processes in that plant. So that's clueless for the, for the operator we have right now. He's done a great job working with that plant. But again, anytime you start hauling outside sources and you gotta take a containment area out which is gonna cost money to build, which is, you gotta take a look at what the plant can handle, what the DNR is gonna allow you to increase, so it's a whole process.
Oh, it's going back to me, why we didn't notice. We've had this conversation, every year. And I just don't remember it.
Yeah, so that's why. If, if the city wanted to look into that, you'd have to have feasibility study down in the plant. Where is that? What's the treatment process is? Because when they start hauling stuff in, you don't know, where, is it just residential? If they start bringing in stuff that's high phosphorus, you gotta treat that. So there's another treatment process you're looking to. So you'd have to build a containment area to hold it, to slowly feed it in, and so that's all the expense, so it's, it's a pretty big deal.
So we are not accepting
No.
septic from anyone else in this town at all?
Okay.
With the idea or possibility that Pike's Bay Sanitary District is reducing who they're allowing or what they're taking in, do you think it'd be recommended and considered determining whether it's feasible to take this outside septic?
I will, I will tell you, no. With a feasibility study, you know, whether you wanna spend the money, but I will tell you this. Some people will say yes, some will say no. I know several wastewater plants that are solely funded by what's holding.
Yeah, that's what I'm assuming as, as well.
I know some, I know a couple of communities that take in waste from haulers, and they strictly do like the residential stuff. And they do, they generate, that generates enough money that it basically pays for the plant themselves.
And those facilities don't have any problem maintaining the balance of?
Well, their plants are designed for that, so.
Every, every plant's different.
Every plant is different. Everybody, you know. Yeah, yeah, with our, with our, I don't even know, I mean, I just, you know, I mean, we struggle, the big thing is reason we never looked at, because we struggle every year just barely making permit, and there are ones that we don't do it. So that's why, you know, it's an engineer thing.
Making permit for, for what?
Uh, making monthly permit.
For?
So.
For, for?
For the levels?
For our, our.
Monitoring levels, okay, that's a.
Yeah. So, you know, some months are better, some months are worse, warm months it struggles, cold months it struggles, in between, it doesn't really fight, so.
Oh, that's a historical situation. You can ask a question, yeah. I don't know who knows the history the best.
So I have a question, and I will say, it's not even, it's not, you were just, you think, I have a question for you though, which is, do you happen to know how many residences ballpark aren't hooked up to the system? Because I'm gonna go follow on with that one, you know where this is going.
Yeah.
Because, because the comment was made that the reason that doing that is, you know, part of the reason is you don't have a hookups.
So the water situation north of the eighth is because our reservoir is below that. So we'd have to put a lift in to get the water up there, but sewage flows downhill.
Absolutely right.
So literally, every
Gravity feed.
Every, every resident in this house, area in this community has the ability to hook into sewer.
Do you know how many there are?
No, I don't.
That's my question, you have?
I can't give you that approximate, but there's quite a few.
We, we have that information, we can get that. And, and there is ability for city to special assess and require that expansion of the sewer utility up the hill and to require those connections. That is a statutorily allowed requirement.
Right, but there's probably a larger part there.
No, so you'd have to, you'd have to determine the amount of that cost of extension of the infrastructure that, so I guess one extreme is the city has a statutory authority to one hundred percent special assess the, the cost of that extension to landowners who are benefited by the expansion of the sewer utility something. Because that is one that is, it's clear by statute that if a city sewer expands to new properties, you can special assess one hundred percent of that cost onto those property owners who are benefiting. But you are required to special assess one hundred percent of that sewer utility expansion on those properties. So there is, I know in the, we put in the new wastewater treatment plant, or the treatment plant, there were discussions at that time about requiring, or where should we require these extensions to? And the, the decision was to limit it where it was, but then require any new construction within five hundred feet of that boundary to pay for and extend the sewer utility to that that's within five hundred feet. What that has had the impact of doing is that no one has built within five hundred feet of the end of our sewer utility. Uh, because they look at that and they say, hey, what's this gonna cost? And the, the cost of construction just skyrockets and no one will do it. So that, where, when we initially enlarged and improved the treatment plant, the thought was it would be an incremental progress on the hill. Are people improving and connecting and connected? Inside there's been a five-hundred-foot gap of any development between the existing systems and those other buildings up there.
Yep, understand, and I can, I can, since I've been here, it's amazing. Because everything north of seven, those lots up there, they sell. And then they be sold. Somebody buys them and they get a phone call. Well, where's my public water and sewer? Got extended, you're also, and the lot sells again. And then they get the owner calling, well, I was told there's water sewer. It's available, you gotta put it in, and it sells again. Some of those lots up there have sold half dozen times because.
So my follow-on question to, I mean, you sort of answered what I thought you were gonna answer. And council is probably gonna say that the city has the ability to do it, it's a right. It is what it is, you're the public provider. So it seems as if it wasn't done or has not had the effect that the city wanted it to. It's fair statement, I think, right? Okay, you're not getting the users that should be on, well, that could be on the system that in the world that I work in, have worked in the past, would be on the system. This is disjointed from it. So what to do to cure it? You can do things, I'm guessing, like when a property is sold, subdivided, request for services is asked, You can do things, I'm guessing, like when a property is sold, subdivided, request for services is asked, you could stipulate a timeframe, you could do it incrementally, you could do it at a, you know, ten percent per year. If the cost to service this area were split out, it cost everybody fifteen grand or whatever, fifteen hundred bucks a year, sold subdivided, then the whole rest of the shooting act would come forward. There can be a system worked out by leadership, if they want to, I believe, because you have a gap, and you know it, you just identified it, it's because the five hundred foot rule is now in place, and I don't know how long it's been, but from my perspective, your independent uh entity is suffering and and, you know, in a sense, going to waste because of it. And and that's a fact that unless it gets addressed, it's going to, only going to exacerbate itself over time, and I don't know how long it's been, but many users.
In early, in early two thousand, it was on the table to do water, to do sewer lines up the hill.
Hmm.
And then there was a very big outcry protest.
There always.
I know, but it's, but let me finish, and so the council at that time pivoted, and they moved and they actually did it over by like the nursing home where our new development is going. So they pivoted and went over in that area instead. And so they still expanded, but I don't think it was, there wasn't as many houses in that area, but that that area has grown also, there, and there is a lot of lots there too that could grow in the future.
And the the multi-house developments, you know, provide a bit of increase, that's a fact, right?
Correct.
You know, when the uh treatment plant was up upgraded, reconstructed, I thought that was early two thousands, around that. And then that was about the same time that we expanded over to Barstow. Uh, to provide, because that was part of the consideration for the size of the treatment plant that we built.
Because Dupont paid, because Dupont paid for that.
Yes, was expanding over to Barstow.
Right, so that all was happening kind of at the same time. I just remember coming to the city council meeting in the audience and listening to it, I was like, whoa, I don't want to be those people. When I was there, we're sitting here talking about the same thing.
Well, that's all, so then then I guess, yes, consideration is, in what Brad was saying, options, there are several options here. I think some that are on the, potentially on the table, uh, for special assessing, moving all the wastewater out, changing the ordinance to define available uh utility to be closer than five hundred feet, so it, you got to think, I, when we did that ordinance, I wasn't here, but I think the the thought was, okay, five hundred feet, people are going to eat that cost because it's worth it. Turns out, no one does. If we expand that to a thousand feet, are people going to eat that cost? Because then that starts eating up more and more of the city, and people are moving into Washington, people want to build in Washington. Is a thousand feet, or is that going to be too much of non-developable property that someone eventually is going to bite the bullet and say, yeah, I'm willing to expand this up here? Or do we, does council take a step and say, require the expansion up further? It's a politically uh challenging decision, I would say.
And we're not doing that today.
No, 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 these are just options that that is.
Getting off track, yes.
Sorry, no.
That's okay, no, that, it's good, it's good to just touch on it a little bit, so everybody can have a sense.
That can bring to our meeting in July, the twenty second.
Yeah. Yeah. It would be a strategy type thing.
And then the other thing that's allowable is that the wastewater treatment plant, if if we can figure out that this expansion costs X amount of money, but it's going to add so much to the revenue, wastewater uh is a separate utility, and they could take out revenue bonds that do not count against the municipal borrowing limit that we are running up against with the uh the highway reconstruction budget.
Which may be changing by the way.
Yes, currently, currently, uh, if we can show that it's going to have this increased revenue, we can have borrowing that is in excess of what our current debt limit is, which we're running up against. So that's something that that can be done for offsetting special assessment costs of the the property owners that are up there. Don't have numbers or anything now, but look, another story might be something that needs to be dealt with sooner than later.
All right, so we're gonna swing back to the report itself, and uh Jerry, is there anything else you want to point out, or does anyone have specific questions on it?
Um, the only thing I'll say is, if you go to the last page, you'll see your your A's, your H's, your R's, and your O's. Um, we will be more or less, I guess, take some of that down the road yet, so um, those areas there, we'll cover to a little, a little better in line with more information for everybody to hope you understand where, why, and where that came from. We get those cleared up, we're doing pretty good, which we both.
Yeah, that's what I get.
Very good, thank you for uh keeping a close eye on those things and helping the guys out down there, and for helping to uh introduce Luke into the whole process.
One more question, Jerry. I don't know if you know this, but I didn't, I don't know the exact specifics, but are you aware of all the means of all these grades, because I know we're one of the top. Yes, we got a one F and one D, but we're one of the best, right?
We're doing really good.
Yeah, uh, so don't, it it's hard to look at some of these grades, but as 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 a whole, we're doing very well.
So are we talking about this later? No, this is it?
That's a chance.
That's okay. Okay, well, at some point then, so we're working, so the, I think the the F of the financial management's always on there, right? But the D in the collection system, which is the CMOM program.
CMOM.
CMOM, Capacity Management, Operation and Maintenance Program. So that's kind of, that's new, right, that we haven't had, that, no, we've always had a bad grade.
Uh, we'll, we'll have uh, we'll have a, uh, that will be available to council, come July. And we'll have to decide um on the, on these two things, maybe if I mentioned it during, you might just want to have a meeting that's just strictly covering these two topics. Um, because it'll probably, it might get a little lengthy.
Okay, that's great.
Understanding what it's all about, what we're gonna do, where we're gonna go from here to get those improvements, um, uh. So the DNR gets on the back.
So this is about the cleaning and the updating of the G I S factors?
And I can, I can, I've been involved somewhat on that, and just as far as a comment, it it's concerning to see that collection systems is a grade D. But that's not because our systems are failing or anything else, it's more of a records management and monitoring uh development there. Uh, not that they're actually discharging more pollutants or
It's more of an administrative
Yes, that's what that issue is.
Oversight on uh, it's it's an overs, it's an administrative and financial oversight on your collection system.
Okay, thanks for the clarification, I assume that's it, but it's hard to understand, yeah.
It is.
When you look at it, there's not a lot of information, so, okay, thanks, it would be great sometime to have a social meeting and talk some of the pros and cons of these things. Okay, thanks, all right? Anyone else have questions? Jerry, anything final? Nope, thank you very much again, thank you. Other guys, thank you. And
Are you going to?
Do we need to, uh, yeah, do we need to vote on the resolution?
Yeah, they need to. Yes.
Would any, would anyone care to make a motion on the resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second, motion by Jared, second by Jen to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three, review and submission of compliance maintenance annual report. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? See none, all in favor?
I agree.
Posed, motion carries. Okay, moving on to uh, the yeast roundup, tab three. So this item is uh really just to kind of alert everyone to the fact that very early this year, we had a warning of the beach already, and it's way earlier than we've ever had, and it's, I talked with um the health department director, um, and she was like, definitely it's the geese. Their their mu- beach monitoring staff, and what did they count, over twenty goslings?
I don't know, I was down there, I was like, wow.
They're everywhere, and so even though um chief was able to get out and do the um handling, um, he's restricted to only doing it on city property, and so there's all these geese in private property that we can't get to for handling, and so then here they are. Um, he did say that uh the year that we let the grass grow by the water, it helped a lot, because geese don't like going in the grass. Um, but you have pros and cons with that too. Um, we did have that presentation, was it last year? I think it was just last year, where the um gentleman came and talked about, uh, you know, rounding up the geese and shipping them off and um euthanizing them, but then donating them to a food program, um, which honestly, in talking with the chief, it sounds like we're gonna have to do that at some point if we want to get caught up and back to a manageable level.
Because we, because we just missed.
I think we just missed the deadline for that this year, we didn't talk about it early enough, because you have to do it at a certain time when they're planted.
When they're molten.
When they're molten, so um.
I was here for that.
Yeah.
Presentation, I remember being like, we should do this.
Right, and we didn't.
And we didn't, because
And then we didn't talk about it.
it's always a public effort, it's it's cost some money, then if you want to donate the geese, it costs extra money. Then we're like, well, it's got to pay extra if you actually want to be donated.
Right, so we're gonna just look into those details again and try to keep it on a schedule that it would actually work if we decide to do it, um, so it would have to be next year. I don't know if that's the case.
We went down just to measure the pavilion the other day with the Parks Committee, um, member and I, and we both got out of the car and was like, whoa.
Just geese.
It's disgusting. I just can't, I can't imagine anybody even wanting to rent a pavilion. It is, it's disgusting.
I just was talking to somebody about renting it for a wedding, I, they were like, nope.
No, and Memorial is beautiful, there's nothing over there, so like, everybody's renting, I'm sure Memorial, but is anybody renting West End? I'm I'm sure once they get down there, even if they rent it, they're like, it's, it's bad, it's, I mean, it's always been a little gross, it's always been a little gross, but it's, like, you can't even walk it. I wouldn't have kids down there, you know, I wouldn't take my kids down there.
Yeah, they had a school, classes went down there, the beach, and they're like, my boys, like, it was, the whole beach is just covered.
Oh, yeah, I walked, I walked them all like crossing the road the other day, and I thought, oh, good luck down there, uh-oh.
So I do know, and this is not something that's specifically, it's just kind of an update, and something that maybe we may want to act on, um, I talked to several older people who historically hunted a lot of geese, and I don't know when, but at some point, the city had been telling people that they could not hunt on the outcrop, rock outcrops, so they're off of West End, um, because that's technically city property, and you can't hunt with a gun, and city property results, specific authorization. I don't know the answer to whether those, there's two of them, those two outcrops are specifically in, within the bulk headline of city washroom, or whether they're outside of that, uh, but it might be something worth considering. The clarification of that for one, and if they are within the bulk headline of city washroom, authorizing goose hunting off of both of those little rock outcrops.
So this bomb.
Yes, we could get that done by this bomb, and it'd require an ordinance update to, what is it, uh, chapter twelve somewhere, I just looked it, um, but if, or if they're, if it isn't within the bulk headline, getting on some public notice to people, saying, hey, this isn't with the city, if you want to hunt on it, it's vacant zoning land, and you can shoot geese off of these islands up here.
So either way, we should get that done there.
I think that would help, but what I was told at the last couple of meetings about this is those are not the resident geese, so, because you can only hunt during hunting season, there aren't migrations, so you're not getting the resident geese.
And that's where where it's, it's just like our hunting, our local early hunting, it's specifically authorized during the early goose season, which is September first to fifteenth, and that's when it's still the resident geese. Um, and that's where the police department goes and they shoot geese at West End, because that's when it's the resident geese, and I think maybe anything would help. I agree, if you're later in in the goose or duck season, it's not going to do anything, but that first two weeks of September would potentially make it.
Did you say something about without explicit permission?
Yeah, so.
And who would give that permission, Harvard Commission, because they are
No, so if it's, if it's within the city, if it's within the city's bulk headline,
Yeah.
Uh, the city, the city has an ordinance, and it's in chapter twelve, that the city can authorize hunting of guns anywhere within the the city limits.
Just upon request?
Yeah, upon request or by ordinance, uh, it's similar to what we do with when we authorize the police department to shoot geese with the guns on city property.
Okay.
Uh, so we could either do it on a specific request, or could change the ordinance to just authorize authorize duck hunting off of those two rock uh outcrops, so they're all there.
Okay.
If they're
Not.
Yeah, I can't, I couldn't find specific records right now to to say whether they are within. According to the zoning, the zoning uh maps and what I can see, they aren't within the city's bulk headline, but I know that I've talked to multiple people who were told by previous administrations going back in the past that those were city property, and they could not duck hunt off of them.
Who is the ultimate determiner of that?
Uh, well, city council bulk headline determination, it says how far out from the shoreline is subject to city jurisdiction, that gets approved by the DNR. That would have been done when the city first became incorporated. I just don't have a record of that right now, and I didn't start looking at this until someone asked me.
That optional might bring up a lot of concern, since that's a very well-used campground
Oh, yeah.
and boat launch.
But we already coached that there's going to be
So that's the, that's just something I didn't say before.
The yawn of the public, I mean.
Yep.
But, yeah, out in the water, no one's in the water, it's a tender, right?
Just uh, just if I, I've got a chance to hunt some, and uh, my understanding is as cheap as the old one and it gives permission where and when you can hunt within the city limits.
Correct, and then
Yeah, acting under his jurisdiction, right?
Yes, and that, that's what we do every year, to authorize the police to perform these goose regulation hunts, and they can designate whomever they want.
But we could open it up to the public.
Yes, and and specifically only on these, and I don't even know if there are in the city's jurisdiction.
Okay, so we'll, we'll look at that.
It's something to look at, but just as there's another option that I had recently thought of.
Derek, did you have something?
So I I had looked into it years in the past, um, and my understanding, when I'm talking to law enforcement and the DNR, those islands are, do fall under Washington City, but when you step foot into the water, you are no longer in the city limits, so legally someone could walk out, stand in the water, five feet from shore, harvest geese, but I'm an avid goose hunter. I I find it hard pressed that very many people are going to want to come to West End Campground and shoot geese, um, because you're going to have conflict, and that's, nobody wants that, people want peace and quiet. Um, so I I think, I don't think we would gain much, I think it would have to be some form of early season, maybe a deprivation permit through the DNR, um, that there would be a a goose roundup, and maybe it would be nice to do it before the camping season, and start to eliminate those resident geese. And I, I, we looked into a deprivation permit to
There's nothing we can do with early, early season.
I know, they're federal, but
Yeah, yeah, it's only the handling of eggs, it's all that we can do, and maybe we need to extend it out to, I don't know if they're egg sites on these islands, um, but doing something there or
He does check those.
He checks them, okay, um, but there's no, there's no way to get it early, other than that.
So there's nothing we can do tonight on this, it was just a special item, and I think there's more discussion to have and some decisions to be made eventually. We just want to make sure we do it in a timely manner so that we're ready for whatever action can be taken, whether that's in the fall or in the fall.
Yeah, when do they do the rounding thing, when it's
That's the
Handling has already been done.
But the rounding, rounding
That's like, we'll like, June, yeah.
That's where they're molting, yeah, in early, early It wouldn't be like now, I think, basically, or maybe just had happened.
So we need to contract with them earlier on, you know, fall.
Certainly.
Playlists.
Because if they give that presentation in January, would it be too late?
No, I think we would have had to do it like then. We would have said, we would have, we would have had to tell him right then, like, yes, we want to do that this year.
Gotcha. Just checking on timings, that's all.
So as a contractor, do they have to get a certain permit to do this roundup?
It's the DNR.
Only the DNR can do that.
Only the DNR.
Yeah.
It's a shame, it's just the fact is that it's maybe in a recreation site, it'll be less and less popular. And also not safe for children for like swimming, so there's safety, you know? I mean, it wasn't like a popular place for people to swim in camp. Be fine.
That also.
No, so. So that just means we're gonna get a lot of pressure in different parts of our city. Because that's a big, beautiful place to, nobody's gonna swim there. The people are gonna swim it off the walking trail and off the cold bath. They're all in smaller areas, right? So just gonna have an issue if we don't start to do something.
So we will bring up this back with more information and decisions. Okay, moving on to special event application. Uh, this is tab four of your packets. Uh, this is an event in September for a dog parade. So what is the ask here? Just to use Washington Avenue?
In Wickdell.
At Wickdell. So how are they getting from Washington Avenue to Wickdell? Just on the sidewalk then? There you go?
My, not that Bill Skribson and I talked about this. He went ahead and forwarded the information. You can see the, the pictures that are given at the back end. They're clearly walking down this community street. I think it's in Michigan, Northport, Michigan.
Well, he said Washington Avenue, but then he said ending at Wickdell. So how do you get from Washington Avenue to Wickdell Park?
I think they're suggesting that you close.
The main street?
That half mile.
A main street?
There was an original, his original question put to me was, you know, we'd like, you know, basically, essentially what you're saying was to do it there. And I've essentially said, yeah, that is not gonna happen. I mean, you're gonna have to, you're gonna close down a state highway. Number one, not your just jurisdiction. Number two, good luck with that during any time of the year, especially around, you know, spring, summer, fall. But could be a possibility, at least in my mind. Not that I make the decisions here, but it could be a possibility elsewhere if you wanted to. And, you know, if someone is here to speak or Bill's on the line, I mean, obviously submit this. So in good faith. But if there's no one here to speak to it, I can't give you any much more than what the official says.
We could do something like the Halloween parade where they, you know, I think that's easily permissible, but I don't.
So that's going down the street, but then turning like on, are you gonna get to Wickdell?
That's up to them how they're gonna get to Wickdell, I guess.
That's what I would suggest is doing Omaha down. And go up to.
But then you have to cross the highway.
You do.
If they come down Washington, they can just go over on Pine.
Go on Pine or side.
Right.
Or inside.
Run off dogs and kids and people and. I don't know.
They have to go single file.
Again, you go to the sideboard.
I think we need more information.
Depends on how many dogs. I guess I'm not making the end of this, I guess.
If. So are we just approving the application as is for Washington Avenue?
Yeah.
Or if we can add, we want some more details.
You, what I might suggest is you could put an approval contingent upon. For instance, if you wanted to choose Pine, that is the direct route, is it not? I mean, right there. So I mean, that's the easy answer, which is if you're choosing Pine, there you go. If you are wanting to run into the DOT about closing down a state highway, I think that's probably.
It would be nice to know from which start to which.
Start to half mile.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we need more clarification.
Well, it says on the top of the front page of this, it says ending on Wickdell Park. So to me, that's.
Which is not on Washington Avenue.
Right, exactly. That's why I asked the question.
You can use it on Pine.
How are they getting on Washington?
Those homeowners' permission to.
No, public street.
None of it's on the road.
I think it makes a lot of sense that you're really gonna start at the top. You're gonna go half mile down, go on Pine, and up to Wickdell.
Yeah, to me, it's a direct path.
Yeah, I think that's what we, we're gonna approve something, that's what we approve and the PS issues.
So like from the Triangle Park kind of area across from St. Louis, is that where we're talking? For a starting here, is that about half mile down to Pine and then over?
Um, it's usually a little bit further up. You're gonna find like, find the, like the way the lake, like one block up there.
Yeah. Uh, St. Louis.
St. Louis, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, St. Louis is usually where everything starts and then.
And then what I go say?
Yeah. Well, I think it's a triangle, triangle, which is right across. Not our Triangle Park, but the Triangle Parking.
Oh, that's a county.
Yeah, yeah. County, yes, that's a good, that's a good place to start.
Somebody tried.
So many triangles, so there's so many. That's a good parking area.
Yeah, it's true.
Yep, so.
No, that's not, that's.
So we would tentatively approve from Sixth Street down to Pine and over to Wickdell Park as a route.
Yes, would be acceptable.
Curious about the date, is that date is really important for this event? That's the same night as the Library Gala. There's a lot going on that day, no wonder if there'd be any conflict.
And if it, if it were, that bill was right, that proposed close period was right by the library.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
What time is the wedding?
No, no, yeah, I'll find out tomorrow.
September twenty one.
Eleven thirty to noon. So it'd only be like the weather.
Yeah, it's probably early for the gala.
Yeah, I think that gala's like late, it's not good.
I think it's evening things.
But if, you know, if we're close to going out or if they've gotta do something ahead of time, you know, to bring things in for the gala, is that gonna screw up their ability?
Well, they can at least come in on.
Yeah.
There's a.
Good point though, I think tiny doors.
They're not very, the library's not very, not fine.
They're, yeah, they're.
Well, right, but it's not like, yeah, well.
Washington.
I think they can still get there.
There would be a way in, I guess.
And it's only till noon.
Yeah.
And, and they would go hard if it goes on laundry or over there, I think.
And we can, of course, dog licenses.
So that is one thing that I, when I was looking at this, one thing that, that I would say is having a condition to this is that any dogs that are spayed have to have evidence of either being licensed or, or appropriate vaccinations that would make them eligible for a dog license. Because we do have a dog license ordinance that requires that we license it there residing in the city, but it doesn't require them, people bring them in from outside.
Right, if they're visiting, they have to have their vaccination.
Correct.
Could we, oh no, how would we?
Yeah.
Someone would have to be there.
You have to have an entry in the sign up when they.
Yeah, you have to have a sign up.
Sure. You have to enter.
Yeah. Okay.
And, and the biggest thing that that does, I think, is realistically, if somebody's gonna walk their dog down the street who we don't know, somebody's gonna walk their dog down the street that we don't know. But that would provide the city with some liability protection that says we took everything, all the steps that we could have taken to make sure that there weren't unvaccinated dogs coming down this closed street in the city.
Can I just ask, is that the reason why we require a dog license? Or is it the county that requires a dog license?
The city.
I know the city does, but I thought a lot of the money went to the county for those dog licenses. And so I'm trying to, I guess the bottom line is I have people who are like, well, why should I have a dog license? What is the purpose? Just a, a fee for the city to make money? And I said, no, I don't think it's a real big moneymaker for us.
The city can't make any money. It's not a, it's not a fee that is allowed to be a revenue source. So any fee for dog licensing.
It's just to make sure that dogs are vaccinated, basically, right?
Correct, it's just a public health protection.
Yeah.
Any fee that can be imposed for dog licensing can only be the amount to offset the administrative costs of enforcing it.
Which is why it's only a few dollars.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's just a public protection ordinance.
Does anyone here to make a motion on this event request? Or, uh, do we wanna wait and ask for more details? Or we just wanna make a motion giving the guidelines that we think are acceptable?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the special use application for a dog parade starting Washington Avenue near the Triangle Parking by St. Louis and down to, um, Pine Street and over to Wickdell as a route. And then also, um, requiring that the dog is either licensed in the city of Washburn or has the vaccinations appropriate. If they're not a resident, if they're not a resident.
Um, so Pine also does not go directly to Wickdell?
It doesn't.
It's close.
It's at the corner.
It's close, it's a corner.
It's out of the corner.
Yeah, it's one house down.
Yeah.
So it's caught, so it's Washington to Pine to Third Avenue.
Yes.
I, I'm, I'm.
Pass Ford, that part.
To include that order to give them into Washburn Park, thank you.
Okay.
There.
Also, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion by Jen Second by Derek.
Just to clarify, I'll make a motion to a special event. And Jen, that's not special goose, those have separate legal meanings.
Of course.
It's a special defense, thank you.
Sorry, I only meant application.
And then it was to show, to show proof of.
License and vaccination.
License or then or.
Or, or vaccination. So license, if it's a resident dog, proof of vaccination, if it's a visiting dog.
Correct.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor.
Uh, alright.
Opposed. Motion carries. Alright. Next, Hayfield Street. Uh, this is tab five and I'm not exactly sure how to approach the topic other than, uh, so the planters are in the terrace area. And so my understanding is that that's okay if there is a terrace area or no?
So my question on this list for Randy, what did someone say? Bring this up.
Jerry, Jerry, I listened to the same gentleman from Wisconsin DRC say, say this over speakerphone and that we just support the requisite stuff out of the statute. So Jerry, I gotta get a new pen line, just ran out. Right back.
Write out ink tonight, huh?
Not for long, I hope.
Uh, okay, so it was brought up while back, we talked about this. So I, I actually reached out to the state and talked with our local manager. And it was brought up, well, this city has this and this city has that. No, they do. So I've rolled through literally twenty cities, checking it all out. And, um, yes, uh, some cities do have planters within terrace areas, but it looks like it's basically a homeward kind of setup to, uh, trash your subicles and benches. Everywhere I went, I didn't. And when I got from the DOT was, yeah, no, they put the pots in, but you can't impede the sidewalk. So our terraces areas are only twenty-two inches, somewhere twenty-four. It's a really great area. They're not designed for benches that you put in those areas. They really wouldn't allow bench. They're kind of like, okay, you got your full of pots, okay? But as far as the sidewalk itself, they're not gonna allow anything on the sidewalks as far as benches or trash cans, plastic racks. It kind of brought up some issues that has been brought up to the city in the past about some businesses that have signage and other things in the, on the public sidewalk, which they're not gonna have because it got brought up. But ultimately, what it came down to is the state's rating here. You're gonna put them on here, probably gonna kick you off. Um, the other thing is, the state says, you know, it's, it's a huge liability factor. You can't leave the sidewalk, that's why they don't allow it. So that's the information I got on it. Uh, I said the planters are smaller, they're not as, they're not, um, by what they've looked at, they're not obstructing the vision at the intersections. But if there was an accident, if somebody claimed to concede and the planter was in the way, it was lawful, you know, so.
So do you have a, yeah, well, I guess for all of these, if you have an email or anything you're writing from saying this, that's a few.
Right there, this is state statute.
Yeah, yeah, but there's nothing like for them actually saying, says a lot of.
So me and, me and Randy had him on the phone, yes.
Okay, that's.
One of the state statute. And, uh, yes, I got this phone number, he said, this is where you go, this is where you book it up. It'd be like somebody going into our ordinance book, looking at our ordinance, like, oh, well, I could read the ordinance, well, I need an email saying that, that ordinance is actually.
Yeah, so then, then when I, that's what I was wondering. Because then some statute, some of that statute says that the city may by ordinance authorize or otherwise regulate the use of the sidewalks. Um, so long as they don't create a, a.
So when you're reading that, that's city sidewalks, that's not state sidewalks. So when I called and asked about that, that was city's determination on the, because it's a state ordinance. And it's not pertaining just to state highways, it's all railways. They kind of have an oversight on, so the city can just adopt it into their, into their ordinance section.
Who care for those sidewalks?
So, and that's very, that's very good. I think we need to bring this issue back, but, and I, I tried to get a clarification on this because I didn't seem to, excuse me, but to give more, more of an idea of what their concern is. Because in my opinion, we can have benches, we can have planters. And that's what I want to see specifically, if we can give more information, what they think is wrong or is otherwise gonna lead to potential liability before we make a decision on if we can have these.
Well, and, and just to be clear, we got together as a group, it was the Parks Committee and the Ad hoc Committee, and nobody wants to put a bench where we can't get a wheelchair by it. You know what I mean?
That wouldn't be allowed.
And so we're not gonna do that. And so the question would be, that's why we wanted a bench put together. You set it on the sidewalk, use it mentally, and you see if you have enough space. We might not even have enough space, right? Because our, our sidewalks are not as wide. Like where I saw sidewalks on, or benches on sidewalks, it was.
Like over here.
They're pretty wide, right? The new ones that are put in are not that wide. And so once we get that bench and we book and, you know, maybe we even have some, you know, folks in town, just make sure, we don't want to impede anybody. And so if they can be allowed and it works, it would be great to have them on the sidewalk. If it doesn't work, because we're impeding and we don't have enough room for a, you know, a wheelchair, then we should get the proper, then we have to go to the private entities because they're not, we can't put them all on public, you know, city land. And so I'm actually a little fine at here that it's even a city council topic. Because like I didn't ask it to be a topic, I thought we were kind of solving it within a small group. And so I was a little shocked that it was even on the council agenda, frankly, and a little disappointed. And I'm just gonna leave it at that. Because I don't think this business is like, I mean, Jerry and Randy and, you know, I don't think this is a council topic.
And that was my, and it do, like, we need more information on what they're saying is wrong or allegedly wrong before deciding anything to do.
I mean, we had a really good meeting last week where we all got together, we talked through it, we had a game plan to see what the laws and regulations were, we were gonna test it out. So I don't know what it's on the benefit of tonight. I think it's a waste of time. Then we should table it and move the business that the council needs to be part of.
Um, and there's no action items, so we don't need to be able to postpone it or anything. We're just, we could bring it back if necessary, if staff and the committee cannot come to a, an agreement.
I thought you can't get an agreement. I thought we're all on the same page. Nobody wants to do anything legal, nobody wants to do anything that's gonna be handicapsism, for sure. So let's give it a chance to play out and, uh.
Can, can I say something?
Of course.
Just, just to then clear my intellectual conscience of this. Okay, when I looked down at that list, it's in state statute and I see tables and chairs. You can call it a bench. It's something akin to sitting on for your purpose of sitting on something on a sidewalk only and, you know, put in the state right of way. That to me meets the, the threshold of a.
Let me add, that is not part of the statute.
Wait, 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 sorry. It says movable objects. If you're putting a, a bench on the sidewalk, I'm assuming we're going to fasten it so that it doesn't move. Because I think the point of that is you don't want a movable object, like a chair, because it's gonna get moved and then it will be in someone's way. But if you affix a. It's gonna get moved and then it will be in someone's way, but if you affix a bench to the sidewalk. Then it's not a movable object anymore, so there is room for interpretation here.
It might not work, we haven't even got a bench up there to look at the speed and distance and see what it was, it was a preliminary discussion.
Right.
And there's a lot of spaces where there's six feet of sidewalk.
Right, Ryan, Max, did you have something else?
Yeah, I also will add that this this in what's in our binder. Uh, the first part, the subpart one, is a, yes, a printout from a statute, doesn't include the whole statute, which allows municipal regulation of certain items. That second part, it says that encroachment is any unlawful or unsafe object located, and other than that, that's not in the statute, that is, I don't know where that came from. So that that might be some interpretation, but it's not specifically in the statute, just for clarification.
So so let's move on and let the committee and staff uh.
And we might be maxed to help us.
Sure.
And I'd be, I'd be happy, because I will say from this, when I saw this in here, there are some things where. It's like, oh, how is, what do we need to do here? There is an ordinance section six two five in the city's ordinances that specifically deals with obstructions and encroachments of uh. City right of way and sidewalks, and there are certain things where uh there are exemptions to. It's it's a general prohibition against any obstruction of city right of way or sidewalk, and there are six exemptions. And I was looking at this, but one of those exemptions is not for city objects or benches or other things. Um, so in twenty twenty-two, we had, the city adopted a policy, not an ordinance, uh, but a policy on this. Unattended displays, which is authorizing these placement of things on city property throughout the city that are not attended.
And I remember what that was, those were the little tin wheels that this town.
Yes, totally, but then but then also for the historical kiosk and other things, that are all to do these. Uh, and city at that time decided they would authorize city placed objects in city right of way and on the sidewalks, but no. Private placement of these things, uh, or to be saying these, a city, where the city is responsible for leasing for these things. But then we didn't actually, looking back, I didn't recognize that this was needed, but we didn't put a an ordinance amendment to this. Obstructions and encroachments section of our streets and sidewalks that exempted these city uh. City place unattended public displays from requiring a permit. So my recommendation, no matter what we do, is to put another exemption in this obstruction and encroachment ordinance for the sidewalks. For any city erected display or object, they exempt from permitting requirement for this sidewalk enclosure. And then that also complies with this statutory section sixty-six uh, oh nine oh seven. So seven, that specifically says the council may by ordinance implement the provisions of this section. And regulate the use of sidewalks within the city to render obstruction. So so that's where I think we can all have this all mesh together, create it so that this is all fine and there's no other questions.
Um, and one final comment on obstruction on sidewalks, I didn't have, I've had two people recently ask me about um. Bushes growing over sidewalks in the city, just as a side note, and I I said, yes, that's. Against the the ordinance, you know, and what do we do about it, I don't know, does someone have to report it? Is that our responsibility to like, is that part of the weed commissioner's duty or?
That's um.
Eric.
Why just go with them?
That's actually in our ordinance section, there's there's a section in the ordinance that states road right of way. And then the terrace area, it's the homeowner's responsibility to maintain that. We do do selectively when we're clearing alleyways and stuff, we find some, we roll by you, take care of some of that stuff uh. Last year, we were clearing some of those old branches uh in the roadway. Um, so, yeah, it's in the ordinance section, if somebody calls it in, uh, depending on what it is, it would just notify the. Homeowner, if they didn't take care of it within a certain amount of time, then it would become a ordinance violation and we should cheaply take.
Okay, so someone should just call in the city hall if they see that occurring, thank you very much.
And my last comment on this is, the last thing I would want out of all of this is any of our businesses to get slack for some of the stuff that they have, because like, for example. It's been noted like, like in front of the hardware store, some of the stuff like Nate's got like a bike rack out there, you know, that's a really wide. He's not.
It's not approaching.
You know, Coco's puts out some tables, you know? And they don't have it this year.
They've been putting them on the side there.
Put them on the side and stuff, so I just don't want, I don't want us to go crazy.
Collateral damage.
And start to like pass collateral damage with our businesses, that's what I was frankly, a little disappointed, I just want to make sure we don't go there, I don't want to make. Make any waves, I think nobody's, nobody's doing anything careful here, right?
No, and the staff perspective is only to make sure that the backside of the city isn't exposed for some reason, if that is all. Clear legally with council and D O T, I mean, Jimmy crack on, this guy doesn't care, but.
No, and it's kind of what works, right, and so we don't even know it's gonna work yet, so.
All right, very good, we'll move on then. Um, next item, D B W storage garage placement. Uh, stand request to conduct bidding process and contract award to lowest of council bidder, if contract is under threat. Available project funding level. So. So is this different than what we did last time? I thought we talked about this.
We we just want to formalize and memorialize the fact that, because it's on a tight schedule now, excuse me. And we're trying to just make sure everybody's in lockstep, but we'll put it out there. And we will go and Jerry and I talked about, you know, searching for building and size and whatever fits and works and and, you know, put it out there for direction, construction costs. Uh, D B W will also then prep the site uh for the size of the building, obviously there's existing or prior existing structure there. As long as you're good with that, we're gonna move forward, because I know it's staffed for quite some time, it's a new one to me, I just want to make sure. That we get every bit of value we can out of the money that is there or it goes away.
What's the deadline on October?
It's the bills October, or spent by October.
Bills need to be processed.
So I don't think there's any action required of this, because it's money that was insurance settled in, because it's just. Do it.
Spend the seventy-two thousand.
Yep, find something that fits and spend it.
There we go, get your marching orders, boss.
Already goes a deal.
And I think, I think we said last time, just it has to stay within the amount of money that we have.
Yeah, we got no extras for that.
Okay, moving on, uh, consider ordinance number twenty-five thousand zero zero two to amend. Revocation suspension, non issuance and non renewal of alcohol license business tabs. Uh. Okay, so this is amending the ordinance to make some language more geared as to what uh business being open is, is that the primary?
Do you want to provide?
I will, I will weigh in on this.
Would you like to share mine, Steph?
Uh, I I can, if you want, so. There was, we've had a few years of questions since the city's been at their quota for the. Uh, liquor licenses, about what the city can do for these businesses that are. Or any potential business that is not open for business, uh, but it's holding one of these license quotas. So the city has seven, right, Tony?
We have eight.
Eight, eight. Our quota for liquor licenses is eight. And we can't issue more than eight, um, so.
Except under very specific.
Yes, except there are certain exemptions. Previously, or historically, the city has had this ordinance, which state statutes allow, but any alcohol license holder who. Does not use or is not open for business for a hundred eighty days or more than fifty percent of the year, uh, the city can. Take actions to revoke that license.
Or uh.
Previously, it was revoked, um, so this this, and it was a very unclear statute, or not statute, ordinance that we had, I would say, um. First, the first thing that we could change with this uh is to make it significantly more tailored to only. Those class B liquor licenses that we have a quota. So this non-use ordinance, it used to apply to any license holder for any alcohol sales. Uh, if they didn't sell or weren't open for business for a hundred eighty days, the city, the ordinance says it shall revoke that license. Realistically, to the city's perspective, it doesn't matter if a class C one license holder isn't open for business, because. The city can issue as many of those as they want. So we advise specifically to say this only applies to class B liquor license holders who are subject to a quota. And that's another exemption I made in here is, there are certain ones like a event center that has over three hundred seating capacity, things like that. Those aren't subject to the quota, so this wouldn't apply to them either, it's only now these quota licenses. And the next major thing that we did with this was. Giving a better description as to what open for business means, uh, and and my goal with writing this ordinance wasn't to, or our goal. We had a lot of discussion back and forth, we we talked to the all of the. Class B liquor license holders, not all, but tried to, and sent out notices and got to know them to give some feedback on this. So the purpose of this revision wasn't to make it more difficult on license holders in the city, it's to. Clarify and make it more clear as to what the expectations are, so that there aren't these gray areas. Uh, so we tried to provide more detailed descriptions of what open for business means. Provided presumptions and examples of what license holders can do to prove that they're open for business. Uh, provided ex more explanations of the specific procedure that would apply if the city were to go down this road of CDU either non-renew or open. Liquor license, um, so that's the main, that's what the purpose of this was. I guess, let's say, if there is any any question about whether this makes it more difficult for businesses in the city, the intent was to make it easier and and. Easier to comply.
More, so yeah, as as we we started the process to revoke a liquor license, and that's where these questions came up from their attorney. Um, and then they were threatened to file an injunction, which would have stopped it from coming to council. Uh, so that's when we stepped back and started talking with Max and just trying to clarify what we had, so those questions could be answered just by the ordinance.
And one other thing that we made this change for, so our previous ordinance on the non-use of a an alcohol license. It, and we kept this the same, saying that if it's if it's non-use for six months. The city shall commence a revocation proceeding. And I think to that, we we had discussions about this, whether it's may or shall, that eliminates a discretion of whether you commence it or not. The pre prior ordinance had a discretionary aspect to it as as far as after this revocation proceeding was commenced. It allowed the license holder to prevent or to present a defense at that revocation proceeding, that. Special circumstances of apply to that business, that they should not be subject to these open for business requirements, meaning. At least fifty percent of the days or a hundred eighty days in. What we did here in this is that I made a, we included a provision that allowed a license holder to. Proactively apply to council, seeking an exemption of this open for business requirement. Uh, so that, let's say, something comes up, the license holder is looking to sell their business, and they might have closed out for a while. They can apply to council and say, hey, I have this unexpected circumstance that that I'm not gonna be open for a hundred eighty days, please grant me a waiver of this to this year. Or you get a health emergency of a an owner, allows them to apply and get that waiver ahead of time, because what we're seeing. In the actual application while we, in the prior ordinance, we did have that. As a defense, once you've already started that revocation proceeding, if your back's against the wall, you're gonna fight tooth and nail and say. No, I was open for the required one time, oh, but even if I wasn't, then I should get this exemption, rather than just focusing on the exemption if that's really what should matter. So we made a preemptive option for people to request that. In drafting this, that preemptive option to request a waiver from the open for business requirements. Get put in there that specifically it was, unless council finds otherwise, specifically for a single year period. So these license holders would, maybe they can, they can request a eternal exemption from this, but. The thought that that preemptive exemption was for an unanticipated situation like sale of a business or. Illness or med uh health condition of an owner that can't open it for that period, um.
How does that get approved, does it come to just like that?
Yep, so that's that's the same same procedures for that preemptive exclusion from the open for business requirement. It's the same procedure as if there were a revocation hearing. Uh, and the same standards that we put in here, that substantial, the council has to find substantial evidence for why this waiver should apply. Uh, and and there's a public notice requirement, opportunity to be heard, uh, there's all the same due process requirements that apply for. Revocation of an alcohol license that would apply for this preemptive application for a waiver. Because the presumption there is, if you get this waiver request granted, that kind of takes the place of a revocation hearing. So I wanted to make sure the same procedures and the same standards applied on each each end.
Okay, so there's, so number six here is if they're going through the revocation or non-renewal. And then number seven is if they're doing the preemption.
Correct, yes, so six is for a defense, if they, if a revocation or non-renewal has been already commenced.
Um, and I circled this last sentence there, because I'm trying to. See if that's part of this whole sentence, if come council finds good cause, exists under this subsection, it may require that the licensee apply for a waiver.
Yeah, so so that's like the.
If the failure to meet the open for business minimum requirements continues for longer than one calendar year.
Correct, so so that section is in there and it's it's one of my least favorite formatting requirements of ordinances. That period after the lowercase b uh is not in that of a sentence. It's just because there is a a third subsection of that ordinance that there has to be a period after it. So that one is there that, that's what I mentioned about uh. The waivers only lasting a year, so this is in that paragraph six, that's when it's arguing a revocation proceeding. Commenced, they submit this defense that they shouldn't be subject to the open for business requirements. Council then can determine, yes, you're right, for this revocation period, for this revocation proceeding, you should not be required to comply with the minimum open for business requirements. But if this is going to last longer than a year, this exemption isn't indefinite, and we're gonna require you to apply. For another hearing for the next year preemptively under that subsection seven.
Okay.
That's what that, oh, that section you have circled is, and that's why that same language isn't exactly the same as that under that subsection seven b. Because I I try to make it as, so that the the license holder could have both options. Both as a defense, with a seeker revocation proceeding, and as a preemptive option.
Uh, one other question that I had is, uh, on the first page under B. Non-use, uh, in this, it says, a license premise shall be presumed to have been open for business, blah blah blah, provide the evidence of any of the following, so it's or, A or B or C. And I think C is a little questionable, because I think you could make whatever you want to say a high. Say.
Correct, so so that's why.
You could say you're open every day, but you're really not.
Yes, and that's why there's, I I put that in there, both there, that it's a presumption, it's not a conclusive fact. So that is a a presumption that you're open for business for the hours that are listed on your website. I can tell you, we've had situations where. There were questions of non-use in. there were questions of non-use, and the website said certain licenses, license premises were open. That's presumed that they're open, but then we had an investigation or a drive-by and showed they weren't open. So, if there is a determination, or a picture, or something that shows that, in fact, they were not open when that website shows they were, that overcomes the presumption that they were open, and then the, the license holder would have to show some other evidence that they.
One of the other.
Were actually of them. Yes.
So, it just indicates that one, if you can.
Correct, and that's why I, I actually went into, in drafting this, did quite a bit of research into definitions of presumptions and, and seeing whether we should phrase this as a rebuttal presumption, or how we should phrase that. And the way that the statutes in Wisconsin courts look at it, is if it's deemed a presumption, without any other clarification, that means that that is rebuttable, if there's any evidence introduced to show that is not true, or is presumed, then that fact has to be proven in some other way. Um, so rather than complicating the ordinance further by saying rebuttable presumption, or that may be overcome by showing us something else, the statute, or the, the case law is very clear that this presumed language can be rebutted.
Okay, I'll make myself a note, rebuttable.
Correct, unless it says conclusive presumption, it is always rebuttable in Wisconsin law.
Okay, anyone, uh, so we're looking to adapt this new verdict to the ordinance that is existing already, correct?
This would completely replace section seven two seventeen of this.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment. I'll see ordinance.
Okay, motion by Jared. Second, right here. Uh, any other questions, comments, or discussion?
Seems like you did your research.
Yes, thank you for the clarifications. Uh, see none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Okay, moving on to, have eight, consider authorization of notice of class C wine license for Aria Forward, Open for Business, Rosa's Pottery Studio at four thirty-one West Gayo Street, sorry, I should have moved this on.
Oh, is that what you're. I knew I recognized that.
Okay, so this is just for notification at this time, correct?
That's correct, so we would do the same notification we did for everybody else, and then come back to council in July, uh, for potential approval.
Okay.
I just.
Oh, I was gonna ask if, if there's a request or any officially made, uh, I forget the name, but the subheading, but it allows us to issue a temporary permit prior to authorization, because this is not going to come back for the formal, uh, start of the license here.
Is that something that we can do?
That's something, yes, we, we can do that.
Um, that is why I'm here, I have been issued of like, trying to apply for DIAN, that said it was gonna take four days, but then it's like over a month to get it back. Um, and then I had to get the telepermit, and then I could put in the waiver work, so I was hoping to have had it for the previous month, so that it would be issued before, like, I know, the day on Saturday, but.